National retailer and another national restaurant as well. Um, in Columbus, Illinois. So, um, my contractors, you know, I feel very confident in this space. We feel like Nebraska is going to be an excellent vision for another Jimmy John's. And our timeline in this project, uh, ranges from around in, uh, March or April of twenty twenty-six, with the project having doors open, uh, sometime in the fall, late fall of that same year. Uh, we feel very confident in this as we just completed a project in, uh, Beatrice. So we do have a history of navigating through, uh, what can be a tricky, um, spring season with weather, as well as finding subcontractors within the area and ensuring that the project does meet its completion. Um, this money would be used for a lot acquisition where I would be, uh, privately funding the remaining part of the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar purchase agreement that I've arranged for Nebraska City. Um, along with some of these costs, um, would be, um, the marketing rights to Nebraska City, which I've already done the purchase, um, regarding the Jimmy Johns, as well as concrete and, um, infrastructure, um, anything from utilities to just, uh, the final touches and tile involved in the project. Um, uh, we plan, or with the Jimmy Johns at least, I do plan on having, um, anywhere from about six to ten full-time positions that I would create in the community, as well as another, uh, ten to fifteen part-time positions as well. So, uh, we plan to come to the community and, um, partner with the community in, uh, terms of, um, becoming a chamber member, as well as sponsoring local events and being a main contributor to the school systems and other community-directed events. We also come to create jobs and create more opportunity for, um, commercial development, especially, um, on that industry. I'd love to answer any and all of your questions if you have any of those, and everything from cost analysis to timelines and, um, just anything about me personally and what I represent as far as a developer and, uh, entrepreneur with, uh, franchise, franchising.
So this is your, I hope, age issue, I didn't know.
Me too. Me too, yeah.
So how long ago did you open the first?
Uh, I opened the first Jimmy Johns in Columbus, uh, in, uh, February of two thousand and nine. I'm a twenty-year man, I started in, uh, uh, college, uh, UNK, studying business, and, uh, one of my roommates said he had a great idea about sandwiches. So I went to re-took off.
You know about how many you would employ and is that true? I mean, do you have drivers, do they still, Jimmy Johns still?
Yeah, excellent question, right? Because you've seen such a surge in third-party, um, with the rise of DoorDash and things like that. Yes, we would like to manage our own delivery operations, and we would like to manage, um, all of our delivery, uh, operations around the entire city, um, and city limits of Nebraska City. It would be a whole-scale restaurant as well, it wouldn't just be a segmented aspect of the franchise. We would offer catering, drive-through, um, delivery services, um, in-store orders, online orders, um, whatever a, a regular Jimmy John's will be, all that's necessary.
That's a good question. And the structure of the agreement, although the loan would be, is a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But as soon as you pay off its payment or severance, you can pay off the first hundred thousand, then the next twenty-five thousand would become the first trigger.
Right, that is what I'm requesting. And, um, I, I, I look for commitments from the, the city as well. Um, it is, um, it is a risk that, you know, um, I calculate and anywhere that I can find assistance in this, um, really goes a long way. It comes in the form of time. So, um, if there are some forgivable loans and there are, you know, some advantageous loans, what it does is it really helps me capture more, um, borrowing power from, um, a financial lender, and it also helps me be able to acquire the lot and begin to work on the lot and not prolong the, the, uh, the project for every year. Our, our franchise agreement, um, with Nebraska City says that, I have a timeline on this, where I have to have doors open by September of twenty-seven, and I'd like to have that, um, the doors open by September of twenty-six.
In Nebraska City, everything has to be finished by April, John.
Okay. Right, that'd be, that'd be awesome. I, uh, I'd like to build out a patio up front, and I think that really goes in the theme of, of some of the, the beauty in the landscape, um, with urban day and, you know, travel and tourism. Um, so in each community I'm involved in, um, I really like to find some specific aspect involved with that community and try and incorporate that. Even though we're, you know, boxed in our franchise, um, still, if any little touch you can do, especially involving development, you know, things like that really actually go a long way.
Question. Thank you.
My name's Lisa Walker and I'm Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation, and I am here on behalf of the Citizens, excuse me, Citizens Advisory Review Committee, um, that met on June, July eighth, um, to discuss this project. And their recommendation is to provide a loan to Nixon Enterprise LLC in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at an interest rate of three point five percent for a term of ten years. Loan repayment will commence upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy, and then a partial loan forgiveness of twenty-five thousand dollars will be granted under the following conditions: timely, month is timely, and successful repayment of the first hundred thousand dollars of the loan; and second is the committee's approval of a business update from Nixon Enterprise LLC, which will include profit and loss statements, as well as a current employment status update.
And just for the record, my address is two-one-zero-nine West Prospect, Norfolk, Nebraska.
Norfolk, Nebraska?
Yeah, um, two-one-zero-nine West Prospect, and that's Norfolk, Nebraska, six-eight-seven-one.
Ready for the next one?
That was unanimous, probably.
It was, correct. Any other questions on that one? All right.
Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Dan Mark and Boyd. Three oh-three South Third Street. Uh, Sam, his dad, Scott, and I were neighbors when we were growing in Norfolk. He's a few years younger than I am, but, uh, I've, uh, last Sam grew up and, uh, worked with him, uh, while I was still working with, uh, the, the, the organization, uh, to try to, uh, deal a bit with, uh, here and, uh, made a menu of three of those other restaurants that he's got off there, uh, and speak to the character of the family and, uh, to go to, uh, Sam's ability to run a restaurant. I've got, uh, plenty of some years of restaurant experience. Not an easy job to have, and to do it well and, uh, continuously improve, it takes some, uh, quality oversight skills. So I would recommend the council to, uh, approve of, uh, the home deposit. Your question's clear.
Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
My name is Jim Coombe, seventeen point one First Portsoy County State, proud citizen, by the way. And, uh, I'm the, uh, committee that recommended this. Uh, uh, we had a chance to, uh, zoom in with Sam on several things, and he answered all the questions very, very well. Uh, and my son lives in Beatrice and he's been in the restaurant there for a while. Uh, and everything that we asked him was great. And when you think about LBA forty, this is what it's for, is things like this. I mean, it's really, that we, Nebraska City has skin in the game, uh, along with Sam. He's got pure skin in the game than we do, uh, but that's what LBA forty is all about, is for situations like this where we can help him, uh, get something, so I'm very much for it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Would anyone like to speak in general?
At this time of move, if we close the public hearing on the use of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in economic development growth funds, as a loan to Nixon Enterprises LLC located at two-one-two-four South Third Street, all second. Motion second for your selection. Go, Paul.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Layman?
Yes.
Commissioner Salsky?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Beckett?
Yes.
I'm now hoping to fund a hearing on the use of economic development growth funds in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation for a housing study grant application.
Hello again, uh, Lisa, can you hear me? Lisa Walker with Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation here today, um, to request funds for our, um, every-five-year study, housing study, um, that is done this year. We are expanding the study to the entire county, um, and we're excited to be able to see what that will bring to our results. Uh, we have already gone to Odo County Board of Commissioners and, um, received a ten thousand dollar peanut branch, uh, to cover kind of their part of it. And so this ask is for eleven thousand dollars. The total study cost is twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, kind of like I was saying, eleven thousand dollars would, uh, cover the rest of the remaining cost of the study. Um, and as I said, the study is done every five years. The results help us to engage developers, possible grants, funding, et cetera, to be able to expand our outreach in the housing area that we all know that we desperately still need in Nebraska City.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Seventeen thousand dollars in this city study reduced to almost nine thousand dollars for the LBA forty-four study. If we go to a community or a county study, will I be able to pull out Nebraska City in its entirety, because our study down to hundred and forty-four places? Will there be a portion that I can pull out as the, the Nebraska City Housing Study to still put on our website under our documents? Or to use wins and any grants and not be an auto-wide that we're just a data point?
Hi, uh, we are using Hannah Kealan, um, associates out of Lincoln, and I have asked them that exact question, and they did confirm that we would have a specific Nebraska City, uh, study that we will have. Any other questions? Okay. Well, now I'm here as the representative of the Citizens Action Advisory Review Committee, and they recommend to the city council to grant, uh, NCA EDC, uh, a grant in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, uh, to cover the remaining cost of the Nebraska City.
They had a scope?
They was, yes.
On, for no case, in both these cases, there are spines, but they will be funded?
There are, yes, both are funded, yes.
Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Dan Mark, three oh-three South Third Street. And the, the studies that have been done over the years, uh, well, they must change between them, but there's been some significant changes between the last one that, uh, was completed and, uh, what we're, what we're doing now. So it's really going to be helpful to guide developers to know what parts of the market uh, need more emphasis and give us some strategies to try to address those. Uh, going countywide, I think, is, uh, is a great idea. Um, it, it, uh, illustrates that as an organization, uh, NCA EDC represents the county as well as Nebraska City, and, uh, also without, I don't think the study has been done in almost any of the villages probably ever. Uh, so it just, it, it shows, uh, cooperation and, uh, efficient discipline, and with the contribution from the county being very significant. Um, it's really given, uh, our side of the study, uh, discount, uh, bottom salary. And then the study would be very helpful for, uh, making plans for, for the future. Like, really, man, we have a lot of wants of, uh, of, of, any questions?
Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Marty Stow, construction facility manager. So I, I did also reach out to Hannah Kealan to, you know, this is new to us, but it's also not very new to them. They do a lot of countywide studies for the main county seat. So this is a Nebraska City, Odo County Housing Study. So I looked at some more of the different counties that they referenced me to, and it says all of our data points are just going to have Nebraska City at the top, you know, for the information, and then some of the smaller communities and then villages underneath. So they will collect that data and those, you know, there it is, but, you know, just each page meets each, each, you know, demographic, whichever thing is just going to have Nebraska City data that should go through, and it's about a hundred and seventy-page document for that county, so, um, it will be site-specific to Nebraska City also.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody present who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
At this time of move, if we close the public hearing on the use of economic development growth funds in the amount of eleven thousand dollars for the Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation for a housing study grant application?
All second. Motion second for your expression. Go, Paul.
Commissioner Salsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Layman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
I'm number six, man of the new business. Resolution twenty-nine ninety-four dash twenty-five, the use of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of economic growth funds as a loan to Nixon Enterprises LLC located at two-one-two-four South Third Street.
Resolution number two-nine-nine-four dash two-five, to use, uh, to use funds from the Nebraska City Growth Fund in accordance with the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan, whereas the City of Nebraska City has received growth funds through the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan created pursuant to the local option units for Economic Development Act, LBA forty, and, whereas growth funds for economic development are allowed to be used for making funds, funding awards to eligible business, businesses in accordance with the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan Program and governing regulations, and, whereas the Citizens Advisory Review Committee and program director have written an initial other law application by eligible business for loan, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to acquire a site in Nebraska City for a future multi-unit commercial development, sought through the Nebraska City Economic Development Plan, whereas the City Council in Nebraska City made a public hearing upon the proposed use of growth funds. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council in Nebraska City that obligation of growth funds is approved as applied in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now low-interest loans subject to terms outlined in the forgivable loan agreement attached hereto as exhibit A, and the mayor's super right authorized to execute all necessary and appropriate documents on behalf of the city and the City of Nebraska City from the program to complete project funding for Good Life Agriculture LLC continued upon approval of the city attorney as the warrant.
Okay. So we have enterprise, enterprise.
All motions group. Approve resolution two-nine-nine-four dash twenty-five on the use of a hundred and twenty-five thousand of the Economic Development Growth Fund as a loan to Nixon Enterprises LLC located at two-one-two-four South Third Street.
All second. So Commissioner Snapples, uh, project on you for NCA EDC. It's been a bad, 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 uh, because we don't really, uh, have a lot of, uh... Motion second for your expression. Go, Paul.
Commissioner Salsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Layman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Beckett?
Yes.
Just want to give a little bit of luck, I want to give a rest of the luck, but appreciate it. Number eight, real select, if you can. And seven, resolution twenty-nine ninety-five dash twenty-five on the use of economic development growth funds in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation for a housing study grant application.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, uh, every person.
I will thank for being here.
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Okay, let's, hopefully this one is the right. So resolution number two-nine-nine-five dash two-five, to, to use funds from the Nebraska City Growth Fund in accordance with the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan, whereas the City of Nebraska City has received growth funds through the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan created pursuant to the local option in this for economic development act, LBA forty, and whereas growth funds for economic development are allowed to be used for making funding awards to eligible businesses in accordance with the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Plan Program and governing regulations, and whereas the Citizens Advisory Review Committee and program director have recommended approval of this grant application by the Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation in the amount of eleven thousand, sought through the Nebraska City Economic Development Plan, whereas the City Council on Nebraska City can conduct a public hearing upon the proposed use of growth funds. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council on Nebraska City that the obligation of growth funds is approved as applied in the maximum amount of eleven thousand in grant funding for expenses to conduct a community housing study, subject to terms outlined in the grant agreement attached hereto as exhibit A, the mayor's super right authorized to execute all necessary appropriate documents on behalf of the city and the City of Nebraska City Economic Development Program to complete the project funding for Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation and to give approval of the city attorney's pass to.
As previously attempted, I will approve, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-nine ninety-five dash two-five on the use of economic development growth funds in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to Nebraska City Area Economic Development Corporation for a housing study grant application.
All second. Eddie for, Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Eddie, please. Motion second for the discussion? Go, Paul.
Okay, Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Salsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Layman?
Yes.
Mayor Brian Beckett?
Yes.
I had made a discussion regarding the Cardale odor. Unfortunately, I was out of town, so it was, uh, client manager today, so we didn't have our, our committee here. So I don't have updates for you from Cardale, other than, uh, continuing as far as I know through the utilities, we've seen the same thing. I did contact, there was a question last time about also called Daddy Asses. So I contacted our, uh, city physician, Dr. Brad Basses, spoke with him about it. He's doing some research on it, but also tried to get, we pointed contact with NDE. It's not the exact person that may answer the question, but the other folks in NDE said they don't measure for it, but it's not present or that should be manageable from what the client does. Is that pretty close what they're presenting?
Yeah, yes.
That's all, uh, from comments from our last meeting. We're hoping to meet the Cardale in the next week or the next. Is there any comments from folks attending who would like to speak as far as updated questions or concerns or issues?
Dean General, five oh seven, Gerald's right. Um, just a question, I'm on the phone, I, I guess I would wonder why they don't measure for that? Because that's what actually starts the stink. And that's what actually starts the stink, the smell, is that, uh, that oil and grease. And, uh, another question that I would have, have, that I would like to have you ask the manager or whoever, have they ever measured the sludge in the lagoons? If so, I would, I would be interested in knowing how much is in there? That's all under that?
It's all, that's oils and grease. I believe they're, they're measuring for broken down components of all, at chemical level. But I will ask.
Okay, yeah, they're, they're maybe, or either to, uh, the oxide, which is, you know, breakdown of it somehow.
Yeah, we're just, we're just ready to hear back. I'm going to definitive answer, um, we have contacted people, we just, we have heard that, uh, you know, Friday afternoon, so, okay. But we'll get, we'll get something more specific regarding this market.
Okay, thank you.
Randy's not here.
Is there anybody else present? Got questions?
You can stand up. She's coming. Marty, Marty's coming, Marty's coming.
There you go, Tim. Tim Morgan, twenty thirteen Central Avenue, Nebraska City, Nebraska. Uh, good news and bad news. Uh, we are noticing in our area, it is declining. The smell is not so offensive. It is still causing us headaches, but it is bringing us mosquitoes. But I have a question, if maybe somebody could answer, um, that how this sludge, and they were talking about, uh, dang it, by whatever it is that, uh, is the insects or whatever is tearing it down? I was wondering if I could get more explanation how that happens, so I can understand it. Thank you.
Not a sludge I skirt, but from the explanations and discussions with Cardale, it's, it was too much pot-ary ammonia, okay, for two, there mentioned pot. Because either in the chemicals or directly applied in the plant, within Washington or lagoon, and that pot-ary ammonia killed their old bacteria. And there's too much residue of the pot in the old sludge. So when they reduce new bacteria, it's, it takes down the new bacteria as well. So when they're putting in the new sludge from the scattered plant, they're putting in a neutralizer to continue to neutralize the old pot-ary ammonia. Very drawn to air-free blow, I don't know if they're, uh, internally asked for doing it. That's my understanding. I hope the smell is getting better because of what they're doing, but we've also had atmospheric conditions, winds out in the north, different weather patterns and things like that, so time is continuing to build itself.
And keep the wind in the north. Can't keep the wind in the north.
And keep the wind out in the north by sheltering. It also helps to keep the temperatures down. And we'll turn it around come January and February, so... Is there anybody else who would like to speak, ask a question, if you're concerned? Thank you for your input. And number nine, discussion slash action regarding the request to close Deep Street between Central Avenue and First Portsoy from seven AM to one thirty P M on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, to allow the company to run from AC unit under the roof of the store in Nebraska.
Marty Stow, construction facility manager, so I hope for approval tonight. Um, whole plumbing isn't even to get a large frame in town to be able to set up on A Street and reseal the AC unit and put a new unit up. The request can be shut down at half o'clock on Gate of the Street. From seven AM tomorrow to one thirty, however, I'm certain that it's going to be short-lived. From 7:00 a.m. tomorrow to 1:30, however, I'm certain that it's going to be short-lived. It's not going to be big in the whole 1:30. Very big train to be paying for an R and D, but that's the time frame that they put in there. So I'm looking for council approval. This is probably something obviously we would try to figure out, but we have time to get it on the agenda, but it hasn't been long. Any questions? Almost approved the request to close 8th Street between Central Avenue and First Corso from 7:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, to allow for a training for the AC unit.
Motion for second further discussion.
I love to offer a frame. I'm on train, but I'm looking.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Satsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes, thank you, Marty. I have a second, and the special slash action to approve the tree city trail committee to apply for grant funds. That's all we've got, so you're going to have to fill us in.
Sure, sure. Tom Carroll, co-chair of the trails committee, with Doug Freezing here in the audience. There's a couple of other committee members as well, and tactics heard of that as well. So we have that as a trails committee, you know, we're in a formal group of folks that we looked at different opportunities of where we would want to extend the trail to next. And the committee has decided that we should pursue the North 11th component of the trail. So the grant applications that we'll be writing include from First Corso to Fifth Avenue, I believe. And we've broken that down into two segments. There is a First Corso to First Avenue and then First Avenue to Fifth Avenue. We're talking about, we're content, 20% contingency, go spend a little bit of a million dollars to complete this project. It would be on the west side of the street. It would be ten foot wide trail path. It would not impede on any, any citizens existing properties there. It would go out into North 11th Street, steal some of that street that's there. It's over, over the wide street for use right now in the city. It, it's expensive because we have to, and that's why we hire engineers. J O, you know, pointed out that you've got to extend the throat of the streets and alleyways and driveways along that, so that's all incorporated into that project. So we want to, and I should say, we also have some interest in supporting the City of Nebraska City in adding possibly trail-ready sidewalks along Port Corso, specific to those areas that don't currently have sidewalks in place. We have citizens that walk back and forth that we would support safe sidewalks along Port Corso as well. So separate project, separate possible grant running. And, you know, we just say the city got to pull me up. You, you have big priorities that we're spending money, we understand that, so. That's what we're after, we're after authorization for us to receive, writing these grants because the funds will go to, as they work with the other ones, to the City of Nebraska City for holding the safety.
North 11th has a tie in the newer, Martin's children.
Yes, 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 yes. It would tie into Marty's bridge. He hates it, that he's saying that. So that's exactly what I did at my. Yes. We did look at extending, you know, trail ends at North Modern Lodge. We did look at going north for about a mile there, but we just felt like this was integral to get us to the city center, so to speak, and use more opportunity for usage to. Doug, do you have anything we should say?
You've covered it perfectly.
Really? Well, I got to write that one down. Thank you, Doug, yeah.
So what are the thumbnail amounts?
Uh. Yes. This is a budget proposal from J O. The first section would total 615,000 to 760, the second section now, oh, yeah, the second section would be 208,000, and then we would have some engineering services. So it'd be a total of $1,000,000, give or take, 20%.
Where's the section lose?
173,000. If we segmented out just the portions that there are no sidewalks existing, then there's an estimate of now 173,000.
Now with east of Port Corso on the street.
Correct.
With east, so kind of basically we ask for the kitchen sidewalk there, it's straight up.
We plan to apply for, I always say it wrong, of the R T P rails.
Rails to trails.
No, no, Recreation Trails Program. R T P. R T P will apply again. The gentleman that was down here, he was very excited about it, said please apply again. You have to have matching funds in order to qualify for that. So we have to do some fundraising, you know, with our foundations and private citizens probably, right, to have matching funds, be able to, I think, the maximum amount we can receive from almost 250,000.
I will make a motion to approve the tree city trail committee to apply for grant funds to pursue the trail project on North 11th Street from First Avenue to, first, uh.
Let's say First Corso.
First Corso.
Yeah.
First, excuse, First Corso north to the North Light Bridge, i.e. Marty's Bridge. And also east on Port Corso and 11th Street to extend such a technical sidewalk. Continue the trail in the future. That's second motion.
Motion for second further discussion. Go call this.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Satsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate you listening, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
I have a discussion slash action regarding the first part contribution in the national contribution. 2000, 2001, 2002, 2003. Tim, I was last year, did what, I'm going to be this year's, quite a good one, so. I'll make a motion to approve the use of matching fund, or to, to make a, yeah, to approve a motion. I'm going to make a motion to request matching funds and allow for $2,200 for every, uh, area of agency on each of the services.
On the, on the registration.
Correct.
Second motion. Motion for second further discussion. Is possibly going to be based on law case on, on, on. Any further discussion? Go call this.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Satsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Resolution 2996-25, signing of the municipal annual certification of program compliance with Nebraska Department of Transportation, end of 2025.
Marty Stowall, Construction Facility Manager. So this is just our annual program compliance. And it's all as long as one and six-year documents that we're designing our roads to Nebraska order of public roads classifications, that we're tracking all of our equipment, that we're tracking all of our inventory. Have a cost accounting for the road funds and also that we're expanding our, our funds appropriately through SGP and HPP. So if we are in compliance and just ready to approve this, and all these documents are all compiled with the one and six-year plan, so each one of these are in each year's file for that. We used to send them to them, but we just keep them on file here now, so we're going to change it year by year. Any questions?
Resolution number 2996-25, signing of the municipal annual certification of program compliance 2025, where our state Nebraska statute section, section 39-2, 115, 39-2, 119, 39-2, 120, 39-2, 121, and 39-25, 20 Plan Two, requires the annual certification of program compliance with the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards. And whereas the state of Nebraska statute, section 39-2020, 2120, excuse me, also requires that the annual certification of program compliance for each municipality shall be signed by the mayor or village board chairman, chairperson, and shall include the resolution of the governing body of the municipality authorizing the signing of the certification. Be resolved that the mayor of the City of Nebraska City is hereby authorized to sign the municipal annual certification of program compliance.
I'll motion to approve resolution 2996-25, signing of the municipal annual certification of program compliance with Nebraska Department of Transportation and, uh, 2025.
All second. Motion for second further discussion.
Commissioner Wayland? Commissioner Sharp?
Get your, get your camera back on.
Yes.
I dropped it.
Yes.